All right, we are coming back from our brief recess and I'm going to turn it over to city staff for a brief presentation.
All right, good evening Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Wendy Salazi and I'm the Division Manager in the Police Department's Division of Cannabis Regulation. With me today is Assistant Chief Paul Joseph and Sergeant David Woolsey, J.C. Hatfield Acting Division Manager in Code Enforcement, and Rick Bruno, Director of Finance. Based on the Public Safety and Strategic Finance and Strategic Support Committee's direction, we're providing an update on the possibility of aligning San Jose's regulations with state regulations and comparing San Jose's annual fees for cannabis operations with other jurisdictions. San Jose's regulations were originally drafted in 2014 and the state regulation of commercial cannabis businesses began in 2018. California's program was designed to allow local regulation and taxation. It empowers municipalities to regulate at the local level, and if regulations conflict, the strictest regulation prevails. It enables cities and counties to regulate issues important to each community. While we've heard feedback that the businesses support the age requirements to remain unchanged, there are some businesses that have let us know they continue to lose business opportunities when they need to turn away 18- to 20-year-old medical patients with valid physician recommendations that other cities accept. Both San Jose's and the state's regulations require age verification prior to purchase, however they differ in how that's accomplished. San Jose requires the use of an electronic age verification device which scans the ID and displays the person's age, and the state's regulations require inspecting a valid form of identification which leads it up to the person inspecting the ID to know the age 21 by date and do the math to determine if the presenter of the ID is under 21 years old. Consistent with previous committee direction, we are not recommending changing our age requirement. As you can see on this chart, where we differ from the state is we background owners between 10% and 20% ownership interest, all employees and drivers. We verify the driver has a valid driver's license and insurance and that the owner of the delivery vehicle knows the vehicle will be used for cannabis delivery. Both San Jose's regulations and the state regulations require persons working at cannabis businesses to wear a specific identification badge, however they differ in purpose. The badge issued by our division is issued after an individual has been fingerprinted as part of the criminal background investigation. By wearing the badge, it allows for quick and easy identification of those persons who have initiated the background process versus those who have not. The state-required badge does not perform that function. An additional benefit of the current identification badge issuance process is it affords the division the opportunity to ascertain accurate employee counts to ensure compliance with labor peace agreement requirements. People working in these businesses have behind-the-scenes access to cannabis, money, and sensitive business information such as building layouts and security measures. These background checks promote a safer work environment in a sensitive industry. The crimes for which convictions could lead to disqualification or denial of a license are similar with San Jose and the state and include crimes such as violence, force, fear, fraud, deception, theft, embezzlement, firearms, and illicit drugs excluding cannabis. In the area of property and product security, there are few key differences between San Jose's regulations and the state's. San Jose requires each business to install and maintain an underwriter laboratory's listed burglar alarm system. It's an alarm system with a mercantile certificate, a standard similar to jewelry stores. The system uses extensive sensors to detect any intrusion and trigger the alarm. San Jose's regulations also prescribe a specific response by the business... Excuse me. The state's regulations also require an alarm monitored by an alarm company or agent but don't specify the standards of the alarm system or the timeliness and nature of the response to an alarm activation. Both sets of regulations require cannabis and cannabis products to be stored indoors, however San Jose additionally requires they are stored in a safe vault or other secure storage inside the premises. This additional requirement is meant to make it more difficult to obtain and divert cannabis and cannabis products in the event of burglary. Video camera systems are required by both San Jose and the state, however video storage is another area in which San Jose's regulations differ from the state's. San Jose requires video be stored and made available to regulators or law enforcement for 30 days while the state requires video to be retained and made available for 90 days. Since the state's requirement is more restrictive, all San Jose businesses must follow the state's storage requirement of 90 days. Another difference in San Jose's security requirements versus the state's is an area of delivery vehicles. San Jose requires delivery vehicles employ a dual-facing camera system, and while alarm and security storage regulations cannot prevent persons from breaking into a business, they can make it difficult and slow them down. Staff reviewed the annual operating fee for cannabis business activities for notable neighboring cities, Mountain View, Oakland, Sacramento, and San Francisco. The operating fees vary between being charged per permit type, cannabis activity, or business. When the fee is based on permit type or activity, it is important to note that one business may hold multiple permits or conduct multiple activities and the total fee each business pays is based on the number of permits or activities. The annual operating fee is intended to recover 100% of the costs incurred by the city to pay for the multi-department staff for their professional responsibilities and other costs needed to sustain the full scope of the city council's policy direction for the program. The staffing level is based on regulatory enforcement and operations related to the registered cannabis businesses. The costs for the programs are paid by the businesses in their annual operating fee and other fees for service. Since the cannabis regulatory program was moved to the police department, the annual operating fee regulatory staffing levels have decreased from 11.33 to 7.25. And in the interest of time, and this is available on the website, there are resources for calling if you have complaints about illegal sales of drugs, there's complaints about registered cannabis businesses, there are resources for code enforcement, and resources for the state of California. And then the police department and code enforcement are scheduled to return to the Public Safety, Finance, and Strategic Support Committee in April regarding regulating licensed tobacco retailers, specifically vape and smoke shops. San Jose holds important significance both in terms of population and geographic location, which underscores the importance of intentional and focused local regulation of cannabis to safeguard public and consumer safety. With such a significant population including many who are consumers and with numerous existing licensees and the potential for an additional 10 equity-owned businesses, it's necessary for San Jose to continue providing appropriate local oversight to commercial cannabis activity to ensure that cannabis products are safe for consumption and that licensees are operating responsibly to mitigate any negative impact on public health and safety. Robust local regulation of cannabis protect public health, ensure consumer safety, and uphold community values is necessitated. By having a team that implements effective regulations locally and that partners with the state on oversight, the city can mitigate potential risks associated with cannabis use while supporting the responsible growth of the industry. The State's Department of Cannabis Control has partnered with San Jose on four enforcement operations to support accountability in the unlicensed market. San Jose's businesses face unfair competition from these unregulated producers and distributors who don't adhere to the same quality and safety standards and threaten our consumers' safety with products that contain harmful contaminants or inaccurate labeling leading to adverse health effects. And so with this, our recommendation is to accept our report on the comparison of the regulations and annual operating fees.
Great, thank you Wendy, appreciate the report and the presentation.
Yeah, Mayor if I may, Paul Joseph, Assistant Chief of Police, I'd just like to add a couple of things to what Wendy presented. So I'm aware obviously of the memo that has come out that suggests some significant changes to the fee structure for the dispensaries. And I would just like to, you know, point out that I think that we have met with the cannabis dispensaries and they bring up some legitimate points for certain. And I would like to say that I think part of the success of the cannabis program in San Jose is due to the regulatory scheme that we have employed over time. There are, you know, we are working on looking at some different things to reduce duplicate regulations or, you know, get the fee structure to be something that's a little more amenable for them. Whenever we talk about turning regulation over to another entity such as the state, I would just caution that we never know exactly what the bandwidth of that state regulation really is. And so while there may be duplicate regulations on the books, if they're not being enforced because the state doesn't have the capacity to visit the dispensaries as frequently as we do, it's hard to predict exactly what the outcome of that turnover of responsibility would be. So I would like to offer two things. One is after speaking with my colleagues in the other city departments involved in the cannabis regulation and the city manager's office, our suggestion would be respectfully to defer the discussion on the fees to the budget process and then have us come back with two possible changes here, one or suggestions for you. One would be to reduce fees in a little bit more measured way through changes to the regulatory structure and the staffing within the cannabis division. The second would be to give you a more full analysis, which we haven't really had time to do, of exactly what kind of regulation we could provide if the fees were adjusted to what is suggested in this memo. Thank you.
Thank you Assistant Chief, and I suspect there are going to be follow-up questions for you on these topics for everybody in the box, but that's helpful, I appreciate you laying that out. Why don't we turn to public comment and then we'll come back to the council?
Okay, thank you. When I call your name, please come down to the microphone. The first person to the microphone speaks, it's no particular order, and the rest of you can sit in this front row that says reserved. So I have Sharmin Shaw, Mike Beeter, Julie Lee, and Angela Long to start. And some of them may have left, so I'm actually just going to call all of them. Eric Engstrom, Brando Dwong, Sean Colly Ray, Nathan Lassard, and Kim Huang.
Good evening. My name is Sharmin Shaw. I'm an attorney that represents half the cannabis businesses in the city of San Jose. I've worked closely with the cannabis businesses and the city of San Jose, the Division of Cannabis Regulation, since the inception of the city's regulatory program. And I'd like to thank the council first for taking the time to really meet with the cannabis businesses and understand and listen to their concerns. I support the memorandum, the five-person, five council member memorandum of Jimenez, Torres, Cohen, Ortiz, and Foley, and the reduction of the annual operating fee from $149,000 a year to $30,000. This will help support the cannabis businesses in remaining operational. We've already had two cannabis businesses become shuttered, and we want to make sure that the remaining cannabis businesses in the city thrive. There are redundant regulations that are being enforced by the state, so we don't need further redundancy by the city. And so again, thank you, and we do support the reduction of the annual fee. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Mike Bittar. I'm the proud owner and operator of Wi-Fiire, a cannabis retail space located at 111 Old Tully Road in the vibrant 7th district of our beautiful city, San Jose. First and foremost, I want to extend my gratitude for the council's unwavering commitment to our industry, especially during these challenging times that we face. In 2023, Wi-Fiire contributed approximately $150,000, which includes $139,000 in the annual fee, among other fees, which we also paid in addition $96,000 to the state. San Jose has one of the highest fees, not just within the state of California, but the entire nation. We've contributed about $8 million since our opening in 2016 in cannabis tax, and we want to continue being part of this beautiful community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening Mayor and city council members. Thank you for addressing this issue we're having in these difficult times right now in the cannabis market with the illegal activities going on in this space. I'm Eric Engstrom, CEO of Canaculture Corporation, established February 2010, located in District 2 at 3591 Charter Park. I support the fee reduction to $30,000 and the removal of San Jose regulations that are duplicative of state regulations. They're redundant and unnecessary, causing businesses tens of thousands of dollars annually. In 2023, my business paid almost $150,000 in fees to the DCR and almost $800,000 in city taxes to San Jose, and another 72 to the state of California for cannabis control of the same regulations in most cases.
Thank you, next speaker.
My name is Brando Dwong. I own and operate Natural Herbal Pain Relief. I actually operate 10th Street Cannabis Co., formerly known as Natural Herbal Pain Relief, on 2121 South 10th Street in District 7. I actually spoke to you guys last month regarding the fee and how I need it to be lowered or else my business won't survive this year. I can confidently say that one month later, my business is doing worse. I contribute $145,000 roughly every year to the DCR. I contribute over $300,000 annually to the general fund, and, you know, with all these contributions, I don't know if I'm going to survive this year unless this fee gets changed. All these illegal operations are encroaching on my business and just making it harder and harder to operate as each month goes by. I can confidently say that I will be contributing less and less each year as time goes on unless something changes. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good evening Mayor and Council, Sean Colly Ray. I want to thank you for your time. It's been a long day, so I'm going to keep my comments short. I ask you to approve the Jimenez, Foley, Cohen, Ortiz, Torres memo. It's been thoughtful. Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Foley have been working on this issue for a long, long time. They understand the issues. This has come before PIS-FIS and CED Committee numerous times, and they really have done a lot of the depth of the work. This is not just a memorandum that has come from six months, or nine months, or 12 months worth of work. This has been a culmination of years of looking at this issue, looking at the businesses, having an eye on business vitality and the general fund and revenues, but also on the safety and security of the city and lining it up with the state. And so I would like to thank Lee Wilcox, the Assistant Chief, the DCR, for doing a wonderful job, and we hope that you support the memorandum. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello Mayor and members of city council. My name is Kim Huang. I am one of the general managers of Hayes Dispensary located on Smith Avenue in District 7. We are in the process of opening two new retail locations in District 1 and District 9. On behalf of Hayes' owners and employees, I'm here to speak in support of item 4.1. In 2023, Hayes paid the city of San Jose almost $800,000 in taxes and fees, including $147,000 in various fees, including the annual operating fee of $139,000, and approximately $644,000 to the city of San Jose's general fund and cannabis business taxes. We spend approximately two to three hours per week addressing requests from the DCR that have nothing to do with protecting public safety. With the reduction of the DCR's scope of work by removing regulations that are duplicative of the state's regulations, we will be better able to use that time to manage our operations and open our new stores. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, I represent Hayes, and my name is Nathan. It's a little bit loud. Let's see. As owner of Hayes, I can confirm that our revenue is down approximately 13% for this year compared to last year. That is a loss of over $206,995. If this continues, Hayes will contribute almost $85,000 less to the city's general fund in 2024. A 13% loss industry-wide would be a loss of almost $2 million in tax revenue to the city. The decrease in sales is due to the loss of business to vape shops that illegally sell cannabis and licensed cannabis delivery businesses. These businesses undercut our prices because they do not pay taxes or fees and no action is taken against them. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker. Okay, back to council.
Great, thank you Tony. Thank you all who spoke during public comment. I'll turn to Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you Mayor, and thank you staff and everyone for touching on this topic and, you know, sharing a few words. This has been floating around for a few years, as was alluded to by Sean, and quite frankly, and I suspect some of my colleagues feel the same way, I'm tired of hearing about this. We want to help sort of tie up the loose ends and move forward in a much more purposeful way. One of them is mention of what's going to come to PIS-FIS in April, and I think that would address some of what we've been hearing consistently from a lot of the folks that have come to see me, and I'm sure that have seen other council members, is that the illicit market is really damaging the legal market, and so we need to figure out a path forward there. And so, obviously chairing Public Safety Committee, my colleagues should assume that something's going to come out of that committee given a recommendation as it relates to maybe how to move forward in addressing the illicit market, which I think is causing a lot of the bleeding that we're hearing about. Now, because, you know, in recognizing the bleeding that's happening because of the illicit market, that's the reason, you know, for me at least, a lot of the conversation and the arguments for a reduction of the fee, the $139,000 fee that we charge as a city, was compelling to me. And so I just wanted to share that that is where my interest sort of came from, because I think it's important for us as a city to go down this road, have this conversation about this particular industry, irrespective of whether we believe in cannabis, we use cannabis, does it matter in my mind? That doesn't matter. In my mind, it's a legit business that was, that's legally doing business and quite frankly, sending a lot of revenue to the city coffers that I think is important for us to protect and do what we can to help uplift and make sure that they thrive, because in my mind, when they're thriving, the city's thriving as it relates to the amount of revenue that's coming in. And with that, I went off, a little off-script, as I typically do. But, but in thinking about the drafting in a memo, we had to consider the following. And that really is, in my mind, is our current fee framework helping or hurting the success of some of the legal, legally operating businesses. And as I just mentioned, I, I think for me and folks that signed on to the memo, I think our, our answer to that was yes, that it is in fact hurting their ability to operate. And that's the reason we offered up the memo that we offered up. Additionally, I think it's important to point out that our memo does not address or impact the tax revenue that's flowing to the city. I think last year was close to fifteen million dollars, and so this fee doesn't touch that at all. That's obviously, we want that to continue flowing and to continue to grow, so that way the city can do a lot of what we just discussed in the March budget message. So I think it's, it's important to keep that in mind. And so in evaluating sort of where we stood as it relates to some of the fees being charged for other cities, we determined that there was a space in which we could make some changes. And so if approved, this direction in the memo really is going to reduce the storefront yearly fee and will effectively move us from the highest in the state, from what I've seen, into about third, right behind Will Dohmar, who I've never been. I think it's in the, in, in Southern California area, and right above Culver City, which charges about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. I think what was also, I'll just lift up the other thing that was confusing to me is, I think when we're talking about fees and whatever report we see in the future, it's important to, for me at least, to get a good indication of where we are as it relates to fees is to compare apples to apples, like storefront to storefront. And I know that the, that the industry sort of lifted up the, the, the mention of Mountain View as an example, because they actually don't have a storefront, and I think they, they've decided not to go that route. And so trying to make sense of some of those numbers was a little confusing, but, but we landed at this particular number, then we, we think that it's a good approach. Recommendation two in the memo, I think touches on the changes to the division, because this is a cost recovery fee, the one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. So if we're in fact reducing that, then that naturally means we're going to need to adjust what exactly we're sort of, what we're regulating, if you will. And so that's why in number two, we state that staff is tasked to make the necessary cuts, the Division of Cannabis Regulation, to make the program cost recovery with the lower fee structure. And if you guys look at the memo, you notice that there was mention of a few things that can be done, and I know the industry has lifted up some of these. But it was, in my mind, and, and helping to draft this memo, it wasn't an exhaustive list. What I hope too sort of indicates on the memo is for, for staff to go back, and if you have other ideas or you think it should be cut here instead of there, I'm okay with that. It's just a matter of listing off a few examples, and so that was really the spirit of the memo. But with that, I'll make a motion to approve the memo signed by myself, Councilmember Torres, Cohen, Ortiz, and Foley.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. And just based on your last comment there, it sounds like you are open to potential modification if, if a couple of those need further study? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the idea was, and I'll actually read number two, just so the public. So it says, "In direct relation to the decrease of the annual fee, align our city's regulation with state regulations by identifying and eliminating duplicative and burdensome regulations within the San Jose Municipal Code. Staff is tasked to make the necessary cuts, the Division of Cannabis Regulation, to make the program cost recovery." So we're essentially saying, reduce it by this much. We were trying not to be prescriptive and to say, this is what you need to cut. It's more, in the memo, I think on page three, it gives some examples as to things that we may address. So I personally leave that up to you all to figure out which one's more impactful than the other and bring that back. But I think the thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars per storefront, I think, gives a framework and the box, if you will, in which we, under which we need to operate. And so that was the spirit of the memo.
Thanks for clarifying. Sure, City Manager, did you want to chime in?
Yes, Councilmember, thank you for that clarification. I am, as your City Manager, concerned with capping our CPI adjustment to maintain cost recovery at three percent, because often, we don't do that for any of our other fees, and then I worry about the equity to all of our other fees across the, across the city and to all of our different customers that use our different services. Because often, you know, depending on what we do with our labor contracts, with our benefit costs or retirement costs, it can be more than three, it could be less than three, but I, I, that part I just want to express my concern with and, and would appreciate if, if you would consider not including that piece of it and letting them naturally stay at a cost recovery, because I don't think there's any way for us to keep a cost recovery without, with that kind of limitation on that piece of it. And also our overhead rates, I just, because we don't control that, and that's, those are based on council decisions from year to year, as you know.
Yeah, I'm fine with taking that out. That's okay.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we'll move forward the memo.
All right. Friendly amendment from the City Manager. Okay. And the secondor was, was it? Okay. Are you comfortable with that? Great. And if the record needs me to have made the friendly amendment, I'll, I will have done that. But thank you, City Manager. That's great. Okay. Okay, so let's go on to Vice Mayor Kame.
Thank you. I guess, you know, I, I was just a little bit sort of unsure. I'm all for reducing fees that, you know, are, you know, in terms of being redundant and all of that. I don't quite know how you landed at thirty, because many of the fees are for services, and then you have to kind of equate, well, you know, these are the fees that are for these services. Obviously, if you had one hundred and thirty-nine and you're going down to thirty or whatever, why isn't it twenty-five? Why isn't it twenty? You know, I mean, I, I don't know what that number, what the right number is, but, you know, obviously, it's a huge reduction in the services, because, I mean, it's supposed to be cost recovery. So, you know, it'd be great to have a little bit of information as to what gets done and what doesn't get done. And yeah, I understand the separation of, of, of taking out what the state already does, but to me, it's quite a big a difference than saying one hundred and thirty-nine versus thirty. Are you capping it at thirty, or are you saying, well, you know? Because it is cost recovery, and we do that with all fees. So I'm just curious.
Yeah, good, good question. And so as with any issue that comes before us, there's folks, industry experts that come and talk to us and discuss sort of what the, what the magic number is, and, and, you know, I think it could have easily been forty-five or something, but there is a rationale. And so I'm wondering if, if Sean is still here. Sean, could, can you, can you come up real quick and briefly? Because I, I know there, there was a, there was a rationale to it, and I have some of the numbers here, but I think industry folks can better explain sort of where, why it is that we landed at thirty, and that was done in consultation with some of the expertise.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor, and Mayor, yes. Essentially, the only function that really exists would be enforcement of underage purchasing, right? San Jose doesn't align with the state when it comes to eighteen versus twenty-one. San Jose doesn't allow twenty-one, pardon me, eighteen, and it's twenty-one or over, and so that's really the function. We went higher than Redwood City, so we would have extra money to, to address any other issues. But I think if we leave it open-ended, then, then the division expands. When, when this started, it was a two percent division, and now it's six plus, and the scope has only increased. And so they're kind of solving for the number, whereas what we want to do is really like bring that number down to something that's reasonable and solve for what needs to be done. And so it's really just that one function that will be performed by, by the city. And there's sufficient money to do that within that. Honestly, other cities don't have a division of cannabis regulation, and so perhaps the number should be zero. This is entirely redundant. And, and the problem is not San Jose's. The truth is, the state took San Jose's regulations, looked at other cities, took those regulations, and then made them the state regulations. And so we were the pioneers, so this made sense in 2014 when it was created, but it's essentially been made redundant by the state, because the state is doing all of this. By you leaving thirty thousand dollars in there, if you multiply twenty-eight stores, fourteen times two, that'll give you about eight hundred and forty thousand dollars plus, which should be sufficient to sufficiently man the division for looking at underage purchasing. And that's where our eye was on this issue, specifically with Councilmember Jimenez. Memo back in October of nineteen, at nineteen through twenty-three, when he specifically said, "I don't want to change the age limitation from twenty-one to eighteen. It has to be twenty-one still." And that was the intent, and that's why we proposed the thirty thousand, because it gives you a number around eight hundred and forty thousand when the stores, that's excluding the additional ten stores that will come with equity, which will probably give another three hundred thousand dollars. So you could look at a division that's going to be funded fully, over a million dollars. So rather than look at maybe that thirty, kind of maybe looking at the entirety of what's happening, and that's a million dollars for really underage enforcement.
And the idea was that we, we sort of identify this number. I know thirty sounds very little, but to Sean's point, looking at the totality, it is, my estimation was a little less than a million or around that. But effectively, what, the, the department in my mind is going to be, is going to be given the, is given the direction to look at what, what suite of regulations can fall within that sort of pot of money, if you will, right? And so it's going to, I think it's going to require us to, to create efficiencies and figure out what can be sort of drawn back and what's duplicative.
So it is in fact a cap?
Correct.
Correct. If, if I can jump in, Vice Mayor, to answer the second part of your question. Even though you guys may be taking action on reducing a fee, all of our fees and charges need to come forward as part of the budget, and we're going to need to outline, you know, reductions or additions as part of the budget. So with a seventy-eight percent decrease in the fee, there, there, there will be impacts that we need to discuss as staff, so we will lay those out, you know, through the proposed budget, so that you can understand those. Some of it will be, you know, changes in the regulatory framework and how we look at it, but also loss of oversight on city revenue streams. I know Councilmember Jimenez mentioned the, the sales tax provisions. We have a fairly robust auditing function that, that makes sure that revenue stream is coming to the city, so there could be losses there as well. But those would be clearly outlined when it comes forward in the fees and charges and part of the budget for you to make a decision on.
I see. I guess, you know, one of the things I guess I would say is that because of the different services that you provide, including the auditing function, function, you know, to me, it seems like if there are areas that we feel need to be added, then when you have a cap, then that's it. You know, there's, there's nothing else you can do. So I, I, I'm sort of, you know, with, without having that information in totality, it's sort of, it's sort of hard to say, oh, yeah, just leave it here, and, and it may well just be. I mean, I'm all for reducing the fees, but I also feel you have to know what you're going to get.
You know, Vice Mayor, I appreciate your comment, and, and I, I very much support the spirit of the recommendations. I, I do wonder, is a slight modification, Councilmember Jimenez, and I believe it was Councilmember Torres was the secondor, if you would consider slightly modifying the first rec to say, reduce the fee to thirty thousand per year, subject to approval when the, when the fees and charges come forward. I think it would behoove the council to understand what staff is actually going to recommend cutting in Recommendation 2. I appreciate the spirit of the cap, but it feels like when we look at the overall fees and charges and staff comes back and says, "At thirty thousand, here's everything we're cutting," might be a good moment to say, "We're good with that?" Or maybe it should go to thirty-two, so we can also do this other thing. I just, it feels kind of hard without knowing what's in Rec. 2, if Rec. 1 is the right cap. I suspect it's probably close, but it's hard for me to know, because I don't really know what we're cutting.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, because, I mean, when it comes back, in whatever form it comes back in fees and charges, any one of us can sort of pull that out and have questions about it and make a particular motion or not, so it doesn't.
Yeah, it's kind of effectively, we could modify it at that time either way, I suppose.
So, so that's what I would expect. It would come back. You would tell us, okay, given the direction, this is what we did. And we were like, okay, no, or maybe we want to take that out and plug that. I mean, so I imagine that's going to happen.
Okay, and then can I just clarify with staff then? Is, is there, I assume, I hope the answer is yes, but is there a time between now and when fees and charges would come back to the council for you to do the analysis? Show us what happens at thirty K? And if staff happens to have any recommendations about, again, we talked about menu of options, alternatives. If something feels missing that staff feels is really important, at least the council could be made aware of it at that time. Does that sound right?
So we were already doing that work, and as, as Sean mentioned, the Assistant Chief, myself, and Wendy and the Sergeant have been continuing to meet with them, so this is ongoing work and something we can absolutely accomplish by that time period.
Okay. As long as that's the understanding, I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion and appreciate, Vice Mayor, you raising those questions. Did you have anything else?
No, no, that's good.
Okay, great. Let me turn to Councilwoman Foley.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do feel like this is an issue that I've been working on since day one of my council years, and I'm looking forward to going on to the next step with this or the next thing. I really appreciate the motion, and being a part of the memo, it is important that we reduce this annual fee, because if the, this amount, it's a huge amount, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand versus thirty, that's a huge number for a business that is struggling when they're comparing themselves to the illicit market. So that's what I, I'm, and, and so if we have businesses, legitimate businesses, going out of business, then that tax revenue we're receiving goes from fifteen million or whatever it is to nothing. And we really depend on that gen, those tax, that tax revenue to supplement our general fund. So I think it benefits us to make sure that we help the legal dispensaries survive in this market. Of course, they have to do a lot to survive and thrive on their own, but this is something that, that we can do by reducing the redundancies of the state red, regulations and our regulations. And I look forward to what those might be when you come back with the menu of, of things that you can do within the thirty thousand. And if we have sixteen licensee, licenses right now, that's about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, plus the ten or so equity businesses. That brings us up to what, six hundred and eighty thousand, I think? So it's, it's money that can be used to offset the expense. Will it fund seven and a quarter FTE? Maybe not. Probably not. But that means that we'll be reducing some of the things that are, are redundancies, are duplicative for the business and related to the state and the city. So that's one thing. I really want these businesses to thrive, as I would want any business to thrive. What I'm really concerned about is the impact of the illicit market. And what, how do we police, to use better, no, to use that word, how do we police the illicit market?
From the code enforcement aspect, there's the storefronts and the TRL businesses now, and the storefronts are far fewer. I think we closed two last year. And the TRL businesses, they're starting to pop up more often, but we're three months into our twelve-month cycle, so we'll have to see how much more severe that gets. But that's something that we're looking at addressing, I believe it was in April, coming back with the police department for the tobacco retailer selling cannabis.
Councilmember, if I could add, you know, we do conduct narcotics sales investigations as just part of our ordinary enforcement. You know, illegal sales of any kind of drug, whether it's cannabis or anything else, are, are not just a regulatory issue, but they're actually a criminal issue, and we have shut down businesses and made arrests and criminal cases. You know, not every single one, obviously, but, but we try to focus on business or entities selling drugs where we feel there's potential for violence, where there's weapons involved. And that's really why I say it's not just a regulatory issue. I wouldn't want code enforcement to go into a place where they, you know, there were public safety hazards or weapons risks or something like that. So we do these investigations for certain.
So if we hear of a smoke shop selling cannabis, and we know they're not one of the sixteen licensees who are registered to do so, you have, I saw a number posted earlier on who we report that to. And then that goes to the police department or code enforcement?
Which number are you talking about, Councilmember Foley?
Wendy, didn't you post a list of who we contact if?
For those, we would recommend that they always felt the, on the state's website, file a complaint there, because they, they have a robust regulatory team or enforcement team up there. And then we also send the information to code enforcement.
Okay, so it starts with code enforcement.
But, but I would just add, if there's an, if there's a business selling any drug illegally in the city of San Jose, you can report it to us. But again, there's, there's sort of a, like anything else, a bandwidth issue about where are we going to put our resources? And if it's, if they're selling and they're not licensed, but there's not the, maybe the potential for violence that there is. for violence that there is at another location selling illegal drugs, then our teams are probably going to focus on the places where there's likely to be more of a public safety hazard. But we will, we can and will conduct those investigations.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just want to go on record that I worked really hard to get an ordinance passed banning flavored tobacco, and that was critical to maintain the health of our kids. But just as important is closing down illicit businesses that are selling weed illegally to underage kids because they can get in and get out. So anything we can do to increase enforcement, so I look forward to what comes out of PISFIS in April in that regard because I think that's really the crux of it. We need to enforce, we need to eliminate the illegal market. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report. I want to make sure that legal business or any businesses are being treated fairly in the city of San Jose. But on the other hand, I like to hear from the police department side. If we do vote it for this reduced amount of fees, how does that affect the police department with their enforcement or even with code enforcement for that matter?
Well, Councilmember, we haven't really had time to analyze exactly what regulatory functions we could and should do if the fee is at the set rate of 30,000 per club. And that's what we would hope to come back to you with, is a clearer picture of what exactly we could do at that funding rate.
Do you think by having redundancy, it reduces some type of crime or organized crime in our city?
Well, I think, like I mentioned earlier, the redundancy sometimes exists on paper, but not in fact. In other words, if the city of San Jose is able to regulate more frequently because just the capacity of our regulatory team versus what the state has, then if you take that function away from us, you're relying on the state of California to do it. And I just don't know exactly how often they visit any of these clubs or even can do that. We have been seeking that information from the state, you know, how many inspectors do you have? How often do you visit? And haven't been able to get that yet. But that's also something we would want to come back to you with to give you a clear picture of what you would be getting at the $30,000 rate.
My understanding from PISFIS that the police department don't do any enforcement, only code enforcement because it's not a criminal, I guess, criminal activity for a smoke shop to.
Code enforcement is primarily responsible for the non-regulation. So the businesses that have a license, we work with the police department and will typically be responsible for issuing the citations and assisting with inspections.
Well, there's numerous reports, let's say a smoke shop is, or multiple smoke shop is selling illegal marijuana or cannabis, whatever it is, but yet there's no enforcement in a sense.
So currently, we do have our tobacco retail licensing ordinance where we're able to potentially take a license away and close down a business if they're not following the regulations of the tobacco retail license ordinance. So there is the possibility of doing that. It's something that's still fairly new, so we haven't gone that far yet. But it's definitely something we're looking at as far as methods to close down these businesses that aren't following the ordinances.
Approximately how many smoke shop do we have in city of San Jose?
So the fee is 698. We get about 350. So I don't know the exact number, but that comes out to about 210, I think, 210 licenses.
Okay. So it sounds like there are a bunch of them, they're non-licensed. And out of last year, how many non-licensed did you shut down?
For the tobacco retail license, we are pretty good about having our list, and they're all licensed, so we don't have to go through shutting those down. Typically, if we do enforcement on these types of businesses, they just register. It's a lot easier to pay the 700 than it is to close down a business. The exception to that is if they're in sensitive use areas. A lot of businesses can't be permitted, so I'm not sure of the number, but those are the ones we will enforce on and close.
What do you mean they can't be permitted?
So there's a sensitive use distance requirement? Like you can't be within a certain distance of schools, can't be within a certain distance of each other, things like that, that will stop a business from being able to be licensed?
And so if they're unable to be licensed and they're violating the distant or near school, why aren't we shutting them down?
We will. It's essentially a land use case at that point, so it's not so much part of the tobacco retail license ordinance. It's just a violation of the municipal code like any other violation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Councilman Jimenez, did you have final thoughts?
I did have final thoughts. I just wanted to ask a question because I think it highlights something that may be of interest to my colleagues. And so if we actually wanted, let's just say we wanted to strip away the fee, we don't want to charge anything, but we still want to do everything we're doing, we could theoretically fund this, or this, the regulations and rules, if you will, via the general fund if we wanted to do that, right?
That, I believe.
Yeah, yes. So right now, San Jose is fully cost recover, cost recovery. Some of the cities that were shown earlier and that's in the memorandum, they have fees that are closer to ours, but retailers actually pay a much lesser fee because those cities actually subsidize those programs out of the general fund in some cases. We do not do this on this program. So that is an option, but you explicitly lay that out in your memorandum that you would not want to subsidize us through the general fund.
Correct, correct. And the reason I mention that is that I believe that if we're able to get the illicit market under control, these businesses are going to provide more tax revenue, right? And so if that in fact happens, and we want to plug some holes as it relates to the drawing back to 1, to the 30,000, we can potentially use some of that additional tax revenue and plug those holes and bring us back to where we were, if you will, without, while maintaining the $30,000 fee. That's all I wanted to lift up. I don't know if that, that thinking makes sense. I wanted to put that out there. It's not part of the memo or anything, but I thought that was important to think about. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for sharing that, Councilmember. All right. I think that exhausts our questions and comments. Tony, let's vote. Okay.
Motion passes, sorry, motion passes unanimously with Davis absent.
Great. Thank you, Tony. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Okay, we're onto our final agenda items, which will be heard concurrently. That's items 8.1 and 8.2. We do have a staff presentation, so we'll let staff get down to the box.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jared Ferguson, Principal Planner, Planning, Building and Code Enforcement, here with Kristin Clements, Division Manager of the Housing Department. We're here today to talk to you about our Housing Catalyst Team Work Plan and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Tell Par City's response to the housing crisis and better coordinate across multiple departments. The Housing Catalyst Team was established in 2018, and we meet twice a month. And in November of 2022, we had our final report on the Housing Crisis Work Plan that was set to conclude at the end of 2023. And given our work at the time of updating our housing element, staff proposed the creation of the Housing Catalyst Team Work Plan. And then in June of 2023, council adopted the Housing Element. And later that month, we presented the CED Committee with our first iteration of the Housing Catalyst Team Work Plan, and then presented that work plan to the city council in August. And then, of course, on January 29th, we were very happy that HCD certified our Housing Element. So as a quick refresher, our Housing Catalyst Team Work Plan is meant to complement and organize our Housing Element work. In our Housing Element, we have 125 work items that cover the eight-year period until 2031, and these work items are meant to address production, preservation, and protection. The Catalyst Team Work Plan contains the near-term work items over the next two years or so and are included as Attachment A in the report. There can also be additional work recommended by staff or directed by council related to housing that may not have been included in the Housing Element. Part of our development of the work plan included developing measures of impact and effort, and in Attachment B of the Housing Catalyst Team Work Plan Report, you'll find a full description of the measures shown here. They're intended to estimate the annual impact an item will have on production, preservation, or protection once it's completed. And we've prioritized our work based on these measurements. And we've now launched a live version of our work plan on our website that's described and linked to in our supplemental memo. You can sort and filter items on your own, and the Housing Catalyst Team intends to post updates to individual items as work progresses throughout the year in between our annual report to CED and the council. So we've highlighted a number of work items in great detail in our report. So just to orient you, the letter and number references here are the same ones that are utilized in the Housing Element. So P7, our City Streamline Ministerial Approval Ordinance, is one of our most significant work items this year. The goal of this is to create a new streamlined entitlement pathway for multifamily housing. And we have just started this, the work on this item this month and aim to complete it by the end of the calendar year. This item also lessens the need to complete sequoia analysis along with our urban village plans as contemplated in P37, as multifamily development in urban villages will likely benefit from the new streamlined ministerial approval ordinance. We also have a work item on small multifamily housing, P35, and this will look at allowing additional opportunities for middle-density housing throughout the city. The first step we want to take in this work is to assess the financial feasibility of these housing types in our city, possibly through our next cost of development report, and that will help inform our policy work. And we've also outlined in our report some future strategies for speeding up the urban village planning process. Some of the strategies discussed include consolidating urban villages and creating a policy framework rather than individual plans for some of our smallest neighborhood urban villages. And then finally, staff is working with HCD to obtain our pro-housing designation per the city council's approval of our application submission last year. And there are a couple of items associated with that designation. And now I'll pass it over to Kristin.
Thanks, Jared. This slide highlights more work items that have an anti-displacement characteristic to them. The work items that are actually related to those that are in the citywide residential anti-displacement plan or strategy are noted in Attachment A, but we've been more inclusive on this slide to, that are worth noting. So just a couple of details, again, everything is in the report in greater detail. We were happy on the first item, R2, to issue our first $5 million Notice of Funding Availability for Acquisition and Rehabilitation. And we are, we are in the process of awarding a preliminary, a letter of intention to commit in the future, once the South Bay Community Land Trusts meets a couple more milestones in progressing with their project. The second item, the Preservation and Community Development Capacity Building, N4, is the city's effort to award $1 million that we received from Google and its community benefit agreements with the city. We held a NOFA late in the year last year and have identified four potential awardees and are working through that awards process currently. And then I'll note the Mobile Home Park General Plan Designation for mobile home parks that need that designation. Staff in 2023, in the Planning Department, did a lot of good work on this, and the city council, as you may remember, approved general plan designation changes for 13 higher priority parks in December. And you'll be seeing the remaining parks' GP designation changes by June. Of the bottom three protection, tenant protection items, the one I'll mention is for S12, eviction prevention activities with focus on courts. Last year, the city staff and partner agencies held 50 weekly courthouse workshops through the eviction diversion program, and they provided emergency financial assistance to pay rent arrears, to help 188 households to remain stably housed, and to, and to help those property owners as well who are owed rent. In addition, staff assisted more than 5,400 households through emails, calls, and walk-in requests. And the city worked with our IGR office to successfully secure a $2 million state earmark to continue activities for this year. This is a reminder of what our regional housing needs allocation goals are. So this is your chart, you will know and you will memorize in love, right? Each of the goals is divided up by income allocation, and above moderate means market-rate housing. So you can see the current maximum income limits for a one-person and four-person household and understand what that looks like this year. It changes every year. And then the total goals for the income categories for the whole period of the housing element, as well as the annual goals that we're shooting for. And note that the affordable categories are 55% of the total goal. This chart shows housing building permits that were issued in 2023. They divided up by income category, with the affordable being the first four groups of bars. And the orange bars represent the city's achievements, and the blue bars the annual goal. Note that this housing element started in February of 2023. So these numbers are only for 11 months. January actually was included in the fifth cycle Housing Element. On the far right, you can see that overall, the city reached 38% of the RENA goal that it would need to, if we did it every year, to meet the overall RENA targets. We did slightly better on affordable units, so extremely low, very low, low-income and mod units together, reached about 40% of the goal for the year, and market-rate units hit 35% of the goal. As noted in the memo, just looking at the affordable housing production future in front of us, you know, the big picture calculation is that the RENA goal is very large, and it would take an inordinate amount of money from the local government, 4.8 billion is the estimate, to meet the entire RENA goal. And again, we would also need, you know, low-income housing tax credits to go with those local awards if we were doing development as we do it now. And of course, those credits would need equity investors. So the system as we now know it is insufficient both at the local level, but also the federal allocation of tax credits for us. There's a federal bill working on that right now. But realistically, we consider our high RENA goals to be aspirational, a stretch goal for us. Realistically, not really possible to achieve, given today's resources, unless the whole production model for affordable housing were to change. In addition, the memo notes that revenues are down from local sources, as we discussed earlier in your budget conversation. This includes LMI half, which is redevelopment loan program income, and Measure E, revenues are down. And County Measure A has basically been exhausted in San Jose for multifamily commitments. And that data on recent requests for the city's NOFA indicates our funds available fell well short of even kind of reasonable typical demand, and the data is in the memo on that. Given that the affordable housing regional bond measure is on this fall's ballot, that presents really the bright spot and the opportunity to be really a complete game changer for San Jose specifically. If a $10 billion bond is approved, San Jose would directly receive approximately $1 billion to use for production, preservation, and protection. The county of Santa Clara would receive about 1.2 billion. The county of Santa Clara would receive about 1.2 billion, and some of San Jose's deals would be able to potentially access those funds as well. And the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority would also make 2 billion available, so they get 20% of the proceeds. For the region's affordable housing needs, San Jose deals could also compete for those funds. So the regional bond is really a once-in-a-generation opportunity to help ease the Bay Area's housing crisis. And then briefly, before we wrap up, we report every year to the state because the city is the housing successor, the city department of housing, is the housing successor to the former San Jose Redevelopment Agency. So we have to report to the state every year on what the assets under control from former redevelopment looks like. Total, we're managing 714 million in assets. And there are four tests we need to meet. We've met all four tests. And these are the recommendations in front of you, which are really just to hear and accept all three reports. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the update and both reports. I think it's really interesting, the trend last year and actually seeing lower completion of market rate than affordable. Obviously, it's very cyclical, but that's the first time we've seen that in a while, which is just noteworthy. I'd also just like to suggest in future updates, I think it would be useful for the council to see on a time series of multiple years, not just permits issued, but certificate of occupancy by number of units, just so we can understand. We sometimes are, and, and those are building permits, so they typically then are completed. Is there much of a gap there? Or is it really just a question of how long?
Yeah, it's usually a question of how long at that point.
Okay, all right. I am still curious about that. Okay, sorry, why don't we go to public comment and we'll come back to the council?
We have no, we have no cards for this item.
There you go. Thank you, I was just anticipating that. Okay, well, thanks again for the report. Let me turn to my colleague, Councilmember Dawn.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, staff, for the report. Regarding the eviction prevention, my understanding is this support housing that the city loans to, for, for these build and also under low-income housing protection as well?
Thank you, council member. Our eviction diversion program, if that's what you're referring to, is, is funding residents that are not in city-funded affordable housing. They're just in market rate housing out there, and they're behind on rents and have received an eviction notice.
Thank you. And why is it every time we get the report, it's always like a week before the due date? It's frustrating. And I like to see the report at least 90 days prior to the due date. And I, I would, I think that's a very reasonable request, so. Prior to me finishing, the affordable housing bond that was proposed in the county, it was supposed to be $10 billion. I would imagine we're, we're not going to get anywhere near $1 billion, so therefore we'll never meet the RHNA goals, right?
Yeah, the, the Bay Area-wide regional bond, the return-to-source requirements are actually in legislation. And so for a $10 billion geo-bond issuance in the region, San Jose would receive 1 billion by formula.
Right, but, but that would not help us to meet the RHNA goal because we don't have 4.8 billion dollars.
Right, it is an amazing amount of funds, but realistically, the RENA goals are kind of a blend of, you know, we need to show that we have the capacity for that much housing, so it's a planning show. And also, it is based on reality of data as to indicate, you know, how much our housing needs are in San Jose per the regional methodology team that actually Michael sat on. So it's kind of both.
Right, so, so we're not going to be able to meet it even if the bond passed? And further down, many years from now, we still won't be able to meet it?
It is quite an aspirational goal. If I could make one comment on the timing of this data, the data does have to go through the end of last calendar year. So actually bringing it forward at this time is the absolute fastest that staff can do it. And, and it is due already on April 1st. So it's, it's quite a heavy lift in the first quarter for staff. So just to clarify the, the sequence there.
Thank you. So I, I move to accept all three report to include that next time you report, it should be 90 days prior to the due date of the report.
Can we just clarify the timing and what's possible? I know this went, this did go to CED first, is that correct? So it was reviewed in committee, but what, what is the time window where staff is able to work with that? And I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes, so for, for the Housing Element Annual Progress Report, we usually have to capture the full calendar year. So we start working on it in early January, then we have to work to put the data together to submit to HCD. So we've kind of put together the, kind of the quickest timeline that we can in order to go to the committee and then come to council in, in time in March, so that we have time to submit by April 1st to HCD.
So your window is, end of the year is, is December 31st. You start work in January, as soon as we're back from the holidays. You get it on an agenda for CED.
February.
Six weeks later, what, four, four, I mean, pretty quick turnaround there in February. At that point, the council has access to the reports. And then you come to us in full council, whatever it is, three weeks, four weeks later. And then you've got to have it to HCD within two weeks. So I'm not quite sure, I mean, council, I'm all for getting ahead of these things. I'm not sure how much faster. You might be able to shave a week off, but probably no, no more than that, right? Is my guess. So I'm, I'm, can you clarify your ask? Because based on the timeline I'm hearing, this seems pretty reasonable.
And mayor, excuse me, this is Rosalind Uwe, deputy city manager. I just want to also emphasize, typically, we've done this every year. We're always required to report to HCD on our progress, on our housing element. And typically, at least for the last nine years I've been here, our, our cadence has been we come to city council in March so that we can submit the report to HCD in April.
Okay. Councilwoman, can you just clarify what you're hoping can be different based on what we just heard about the, the timelines?
Here's, here's my, what I'm asking is that you say it's in March. I prefer to have a report or briefing to the council member, April 1st is the due date, 90 days before that.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be possible, but I would say this, that the, one, we can do a briefing with your office way ahead of time on this. And two, the memo to CED is available a week before the last Monday of February. So that gives you probably about a month ahead of this council hearing, at least a month, if not more, a month or so, to actually review the data. And we could do a briefing with you.
So just to be clear.
How much time you talking about way ahead? Like two weeks, four weeks?
30 days.
30 days?
So the C, so it's the fourth Monday of February that we go to CED, and the memo is posted, I believe it's 10 days before that.
It's actually, it's actually a week.
A week, so a week, so it would be available. And then we can meet with you in, in that period, even before CED or around that time to go over the information.
So this report, in preparation for CED, was released to the council, what was publicly available approximately 30 days ago. More or less, I mean, just based on your math. I think the problem with 90 days is if you take April 1st and you go 90 days back, you're basically at January 1, if I'm doing my math correctly, which is actually when the analysis starts, based on when the year ends and the data comes in. So I'm not sure that they can.
Let's agree it's 30 days, how's that, is that fair?
We've got a built-in, the soonest timeline that I think we can do. I mean, I would add that, you know, the reason that we've done the live dashboard for the catalyst is so that we can provide kind of real-time updates as, as items are being, you know, worked on. We can provide updates that anyone, the public and council can, can kind of review.
So, so staff, what I'd like to do is, based on the council member's request, that when we're going to CED in February, around that timeframe, which is definitely ahead of this council meeting, right, you know, when we're releasing this memo, which this year would have been released around February 20th, that you put on your schedule to brief the council member. And then you can be guaranteed you're getting it around, a briefing really early, as early as we possibly can.
All right. Is that amenable to you, council member?
That's good.
That sounds fair to me. Okay, great. Seconder, you all right with that? Great, okay. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, just, just a couple of things that were, that I wanted to comment on based on, on the previous comments. First of all, it's, it's not really what happens after this date that matters or what happens before this date that matters. So getting a briefing as individual council members makes sense before this date, but we don't need more time after this date. I mean, we're going to prove it today and it's going to get submitted. I'm not sure what more time after this date would have done for us. Back to the comment about the billion dollars and whether that's enough to get us to 4.8. Obviously, it's not everything, but it's a huge amount. And, and housing can only be built so quickly. I mean, we, a billion dollars worth of housing would be a, a good amount of housing. So, you know, that, that's as much for San Jose alone as Measure A was for the entire county. And I want to ask just a follow-up question on that. Every time we leverage, we, we provide resources, we're also leveraging other sources of funding. So presumably, a $1 billion San Jose allocation could leverage $2 billion worth of affordable housing construction.
It leverages more, we're typically around 20% of a budget.
So that could be free.
So it leverages, yeah.
So we, we could get more than 50% of that 4.8 billion just out of a $1 billion allocation from a regional bond. I just wanted to be clear, it's a huge benefit. And by the way, they're considering a $20 billion regional bond, which could actually double what we receive as a city. So that hasn't been decided yet, based on polling. But this is, this is huge if it happens, and I don't want anybody to be under any illusion that this is not impactful or serious. So anyway, that, I just wanted to make that comment. And I want to also just say, Michael, we'll miss your, your clarifications from the box. So I appreciate that you're, yeah, yeah.
You, Michael.
I missed that. Yeah, you. Thank you.
Michael's going to come back for briefings next year.
Okay, yeah. You're going to have to bring him in, you're going to have to bring him in as a.
He'll be back by popular demand.
I'll hang out in the audience, but I'm not going to be a gadfly, okay? I promise that.
Aw, come on, we're going to miss you. All right, thanks, council member. Michael, thank you for your service to the, to the residents of our city. I believe, Tony, we are ready to vote on the motion.
Motion passes unanimously with Davis absent.
Great, thank you all. Let's go build and preserve some housing. We're on to open forum, opportunity for members of the public who would like to comment on city business that was not on today's agenda. To do so, in keeping with our public comment today, we'll limit to one minute. Tony?
Diane Gaskell and Elise with Burrell Park Neighbors.
Thank you, my name is Elise Desart. I'm a proud resident of Burrell Park in San Jose District 6. For a century, Burrell Park has been a vibrant hub of community spirit and was one of the city's first affordable neighborhoods. We would like to ask your support in three key areas. 2024 is the centennial anniversary of our neighborhood. We would be honored to receive a proclamation from the city acknowledging the significance of our neighborhood centennial. This proclamation would not only recognize the rich history and contributions of Burrell Park, but also serve as a symbol of unity and pride. We are also seeking financial support for a block party to commemorate our centennial. We've also raised funds for the construction and installation of a small sign, advising visitors who come into our small neighborhood that.
Thank you, your time.
Let me just note, Stephen Noe and my team manages proclamations, and then we'll also loop in your council member, and we can figure out next steps. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, everybody. First, I wanted to thank you for sitting here for six hours and listening to all these speeches. I imagine your ears are falling off right about now, and I'm sorry to take more of your time. My name is Diane Gaskell. I'm a member of the City of San Jose Community Emergency Response Team and also a member of the State of California Disaster Emergency Response Team. I have seen this homeless crisis we have upfront and personal, and that's why I'm here. For several years, I was a voluntary project manager for a national nonprofit company called Rebuilding Together. I think some of you might have heard of it. Every year, right here in San Jose, Rebuilding Together, using grant money and volunteers from all across the valley, rebuilds and renovates homes.
Your, your time is up. Your time is up.
I'm sorry?
Your time is up. Yes.
Quickly and easily, without having to build or buy anything. And I've been in these homes, I've done the work myself, and I know that we can do this. I'm going to work with your outreach staff to present a plan to present to you at a later date. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thanks, Stephen. Great, well, thank you all. Passed our march message onward, we're adjourned.